Good morning. Staff meeting Tuesday, July 16th. Manager Stolz.
Good morning Chairman and Commission. One item today, and I'll kind of tell you how this topic came up. We were, we were going through the budget. We were looking at ICT one and just the concept of mobile crisis response. And I thought it might be appropriate for the commission and to just be updated on this topic of where we're, where we stand today. And Joan will lead us through the conversation and then I'm sure there'll be questions. So she was going to give an overview of where we stand.
There you go. Good morning, Joan.
Hey, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Senior Leadership. Pleasure to be here this morning. Mobile crisis response is a really critical component of what we do and very visible and important to the community. So it's, it's a nice opportunity to get to share what we're doing and the amazing work that's being done and the complexity of work that's being done. We really are partners with our public safety partners. We're out there with them in these calls and, and trying to manage complex issues for better outcomes than just being picked up and taken to jail. There seems to be an increased prevalence of suicidal ideation with the intent of being killed by a law enforcement officer. So we're called out for a lot of those to try to negotiate a safe, a safe ending so that the person can stay in the community and get past that emergent need. So I took the approach of wanting to talk through a little bit about the crisis continuum as a baseline and then moving into talking specifically about mobile crisis response. But mobile crisis response is heavily tied to 988. And I just thought it was really kind of serendipitous that today is actually the second year anniversary of the launch of 988 nationally. So the fact that we're talking about mobile crisis response on that, that date is pretty, pretty significant to me. And a very important reminder that we have amazing workforce doing amazing things with 988 and crisis response. And I wanted to do a quick shout out to them because I'm really proud of where Sedgwick County is with regard to this. We are a leader statewide and we get lots of calls from other states and others, community mental health centers and certified community behavioral health clinics asking to have tours of our facility and tours and ride alongs with our staff because they're trying to do what we have done. So I think we need to really be proud of that. So with that, I wanted to start off with what is our crisis mission statement? Earlier this year, our crisis leadership team wanted to realign and really get grounded on the same page. And so they started with defining a new definition or a new mission statement for the crisis center. So that that statement is Comcare Community Crisis Center believes healing, growth and recovery are possible. We are committed to advocacy, safety and connection by providing equitable, inclusive, person-centered care while ensuring access to crucial mental health services whenever and wherever needed. We're dedicated to offering hope while reducing the stigma of mental health. And that really is the crux of crisis services, but particularly mobile crisis because many of these people are not known to Comcare and it might be their first encounter with behavioral health interventions. So I appreciate the crisis team for sharing some of this content with me. So we have a full continuum of crisis services. It isn't a one, one service facility. We offer the 24/7 crisis hotline. We have 24/7 walk-in crisis intervention. We offer 24, 23-hour outpatient crisis observation. This is folks that will come and stay with us in our sleeping recliners for up to 23 hours, which gives us a chance to engage that individual in some crisis planning and get them connected to necessary services or reconnected with external providers and to engage their family in that care planning. We do have a children's crisis bed. We rarely talk about this, but rather than have a facility that houses both adults and children, we actually lease beds at the Wichita Children's Home. They provide us the space and when we have a child in need of observation or crisis stabilization, we put staff out there at the Wichita Children's Home to work 24/7 with that individual. Lot less threatening to the youth. Their environment is enriching in that it has a lot of activity rooms and you can work off energy in their exercise areas. So it's a great partnership. We also have the Adult Crisis Stabilization Unit, which is our unit where we can keep somebody for up to 72 hours. This is somebody who's not going to stabilize in that 23-hour window. It gives us a chance to get them seen by a medication provider, by clinicians, providing a safe and supportive milieu where that person can get their sleep pattern back in order and, and stabilize before going home or onto other services. We do have what we call transitional residential services at our crisis stabilization unit. If somebody's not going to stabilize in that 72-hour window, we had a community need for a longer stay bed. So we rotate depending on what the need of the population is. And if so, if necessary, we can keep them longer. It is a small rent-based program, but they get therapy and groups and, and other things while staying on that unit and getting the support of staff. You know, we're talking about our mobile crisis services. We have different types of mobile crisis services. So we also have the integrated care teams. I'll talk about that as well as 911 embedded services. The Sedgwick County Offender Assessment Program was one of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council outcomes years ago intended to provide short-term transitional case management for folks that were in and out of the jail for nuisance-type activities. And, and we continue to deliver that service and continue to see good outcomes. We do have a high utilization transition team, case management team. These are folks that work with more specialized populations. So those releasing from the Kansas Department of Corrections, those releasing from the jail and they have a history of not engaging in services, those that go in and out of the emergency department without connecting to services after discharge. So we value that team. We have partnership with SAC for sobering and social detox. We have NAMI who comes on site to provide family support. So we make people aware of this opportunity to engage with NAMI. And if they showed a desire, they have hours and they can meet with the NAMI representatives and get engaged. It's really intended for family members who are struggling with what does it mean to live with a family member who has a serious mental health issue? And then we have inpatient services, which includes physicians and PRNs or advanced registered practitioners at Via Christi that round on Comcare patients in the inpatient unit. We average between 20 and 30 patients in the inpatient unit via Christi on a daily basis. Okay, so emergency services. So you know, the 988 suicide and crisis line, we still market Comcare's local number because a lot of people are familiar it and have used it for years. But we also promote the 988 suicide crisis line. It's a direct connection to compassionate, accessible care and support for anyone experiencing mental health-related distress. That term distress is important because this is a self-identified crisis. It's not us saying this is a crisis. Whether that's lots of suicide, mental health or substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress. You know, we've had, we see a lot of youth who have distress in response to the end of a relationship that might have been their first love. We have others who are going through divorce or financial distress. All of these things can trigger a first-time experience with behavioral health. This, this, this provides free and confidential emotional support and crisis counseling to people in suicidal crisis or emotional distress. Most importantly, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Emergency services also consists of mobile dispatch. We do a lot of welfare checks. People call and say, hey, I'm, I'm worried about John. He hasn't come out of his house in a week. What should I do? We will make an effort to engage that individual by going to their home and doing a welfare check. And if we need to, we partner with Rusty's teams and WPD if there's any safety concerns of trying to access that individual in the community. And then we do a ton of care coordination specifically in crisis services with local hospitals because the local hospital is just one level of care. It's those transitions of care that are most critical because we know that people will often fall through the cracks if they don't have warm handoffs or somebody to be engaging them prior to discharge and then upon release. Okay, so I put together this short mobile crisis response timeline because I think the historical perspective is really important as we start talking about the specific teams. But our beginnings start back in the eighties. Comcare was ahead of the curve before crisis services were even mandatory. We had a crisis team. When we first became a communal health center, it was somebody with a phone after hours in the sixties. In the eighties, we had a facility where we would take crisis calls and we started growing our presence with regard to mobile crisis. It didn't look anything like it does today because it was based on availability. It was limited hours, but we would go out and they were planned visits. So it wasn't necessary dispatch upon need. It was a planned intervention. You coordinated with a family member or a loved one when you were going to be there. But the eighties, I mean, that's a long time ago. But in 2015 is when we actually moved into our current crisis center and that's where we saw a real significant growth in terms of our service hours and availability of the mobile crisis team. So at that point, we were available daytime hours and we would dispatch upon need. And then in 2020 through 2022, we had ICT one originally formed as a pilot. And for anybody listening, ICT one was a collaboration between the city and the county and involves a three-member team, a paramedic, a law enforcement officer and a Comcare clinician to respond to emergency crisis situations in the community. Started as a pilot was, I think, fully funded in 2021. I think it was a pilot in 2020. DCF created a mobile crisis response hotline for youth and families. Rarely hear about it because in our community, we already had the crisis line. So people weren't calling this third-party entity called Beacon to access these services. But Beacon is one of the managed care organizations in the state of Kansas and they actually manage this youth hotline intended for youth between the ages of zero and 21. And families can call and utilize that too. What they do is then reach out to the community mental health center in the area, that being Comcare in Sedgwick County to dispatch a mobile crisis response. And we launched 988 in 2022. Comcare is a lifeline center, so we do answer crisis calls that come into the 316 area code. That has been very productive. It's a lot easier to market and convince. Downtown here with WPD as well as ICT one because it allows for increased communication and collaboration and really aligning the goals and the missions of these teams in a much better way. And then in 2023 is when Comcare received our full certification as a certified community behavioral health clinic. One of the things that'll help us get our full certification is the fact that we had robust mobile crisis response teams. But with that came some additional funding for KEDADS and we were able to add additional teams, add some fleet to our team and, and heighten the focus on trying to start capturing the data and relevance around what we were doing. So long history from 1980 to 2024. And I think we need to be really proud of those efforts. So I thought another way to start the conversation was to look at what it takes to staff these services. So I went from the time they call in to the time we finish up the services. So the top part is our positions. So we have crisis response team specialists. These are the folks that are sitting answering the crisis calls in our crisis hotline center. We have 16 full-time and 17 part-time. You'll see that we're fairly well-staffed in that area. These are bachelor-degreed or bachelor-equivalent skilled staff. They have to have a year of experience to substitute for a year of education. They go through intensive training. You really have to, crisis work is different, just like those in law enforcement. You have to be able to identify when your adrenaline is starting to pump and you have to be able to self-calm and soothe yourself so that you could be calm in that, that situation where somebody else may be emotionally agitated. So we do a lot of role-play training, shadowing, preparation with these folks before we put them on the phones. Because again, these are folks in crisis that are calling and you never know the intensity of that call and we want our team well-prepared. We'll say, staff that do this work really like the work. It's kind of like folks that work in an emergency department. They like that work, but just like in a hospital, not very many people want to work in an emergency department. So your, your pool of candidates shrinks quite a bit when you start talking about these positions. We do have three team leads. These are bachelor-degreed staff. They, they oversee our crisis hotline staff. They train them, they monitor them, they shadow them. They work with them. They really provide a lot of emotional support and wellness because the work is intense and, and they need to be able to chill at the end of a shift in order to go home and not take their work with them. I feel like I'm talking to the choir when I'm looking at Rusty because you have the same thing with your workforce. It's, it's intense work. We have one supervisor, we have one manager and we are in the process. In the next few weeks, we're hoping to get our contract from KEDADS to start our implementation and hiring of folks who will take chat and text through our 988 line. And for anybody that knows youth, they like their phones and they like to chat and they like to text. So we think it'll increase the flow of, of youth accessing our crisis line. And when they access our crisis line, then there is potential that they might need a crisis mobile response. And so it gives them that outlook. I think the other important piece to talk about is we do have an embedded, we have two embedded integrated care specialists, bachelor-degreed mental health professionals within 911 dispatch. I'll talk about that just a little bit. We have the integrated care teams. Those are one through five. And then we have the mobile crisis response teams within our own crisis center, which we dispatch and we have eight of those teams. So what is mobile crisis response? You know, we screen for safety and we may or may not need law enforcement backup for safety. I think the important thing, the distinction between mobile crisis response ICT one and ICT two is mobile crisis response is countywide. So we will go into the other municipalities and serve those populations where ICT one and two through five, which are funded, one through the county and the other four through the city are citywide service options. So they only stay within the Wichita vicinity. Characteristics that are shared by all of these teams is we see mobile crisis response as an emergent service. So the goal is to respond within an hour depending on staff availability. You'll see some of our data in a minute, but you'll be pleased to know that we have an excellent response time and are once again seen as leaders in the field statewide and in other areas for that ability to respond. These teams all consist of QMHPs and an integrated care specialist or a peer support worker. So sometimes we take peer support because particularly when you're talking about minority populations, somebody with lived experience is sometimes much more effective than a professional employee when you're talking about crisis. You know, because a lot of people don't want to seek services or there's stigma around it or you know, you're seen as not being strong or the word weak comes up a lot when we talk about minority groups and what it means to have a mental health crisis. But peer support is able to break through that differently. Like I said, then sometimes our clinicians who are very well-trained, but may or may not have that lived experience. The person served is at imminent risk to self or others directly related to their mental health symptoms. So we're going to try to treat the behaviors and create a crisis plan with them when we're out there. Shared characteristics again is they can call 998 or the crisis line at Comcare. Some warm transfers happen from 911 directly to Comcare. And I think the important thing for me is, we don't talk about it a lot publicly, but we talk a lot about it internally is because some of these are cold calls, safety is paramount. We do a ton of screening if there is any risk of a weapon on site or a risk to the safety of our staff or imminent risk to somebody in that home or in the community next to that individual or to that individual. We're going to partner with our law enforcement partners to make a response to that call. The differences between mobile crisis response, which are our eight internal teams versus our work with the city, is ICT one will also self-dispatch from radio traffic, calls to 911 or law enforcement requests directly. And ICT two through five, which is the newest part of our continuum of mobile services, are directly, are direct responses to law enforcement requests. So again, we may meet that law enforcement individual in the community to deal with the situation or they may dispatch us in lieu of a law enforcement officer. It just depends on what the crisis is. So new as of mid fall last year is this effort to embed integrated care specialists into 911. This was something we had heard about that was really going well in other communities. We sought consultation from a couple of entities in Texas and Alora and Comcare worked together to define what are the key hours that would be beneficial to have a mental health staff embedded in 911 so that our dispatch can transfer those mental health calls to these individuals because they often take longer than other calls and maybe get a response that is a mental health response versus just a law enforcement, fire or medical response. It allows for direct handoffs from 911 dispatch to our team. They provide support. They have the ability to listen and drop into other calls that 911 dispatch is managing and do some consultation. And they can make warm referrals directly to the mobile crisis response team at Comcare versus 911 referrals to ICT two, one through five. So this is new. We're in a learning curve. Are we utilizing as well as we can? No, and we're trying to figure out why not. Is it a training issue? Is it a lack of need? I don't believe it's a lack of need. What, what's the barriers? Because the number of calls being transferred to these individuals is not where we thought it would be. So we're reached out to our, our peers in Texas and we have a consultation call coming up, I think, next week to see how their early starts went and see how they grew the presence and, and the work and collaboration of these teams. So everybody always asks, well, when is mobile crisis available, right? It's pretty available. So again, if we talk about mobile crisis response, these are the eight teams that are internal to Comcare. We had four prior to 988 and we added four with funding from KEDADS, four teams with the 988 continuum. These are two-person teams. Again, it is a master degree clinician and an integrated care specialist with a bachelor's degree. Each has a unique role on that team. One is diagnostic and clinical intervention. The other is trying to figure out what are the social supports and other needs of that family that may be having that crisis or the individual experiencing distress. Or again, if we feel peer support is a more appropriate team member, they may accompany the clinician in lieu of the integrated care specialist or add to that team. This is a 24-hour, seven service. I will say, we do our monumental best to make that available 24/7. We have had some staffing challenges off and on, but we're getting into a good spot. So we have two teams that work Sunday through Wednesday from eight to six, two teams that work Wednesday through Saturday from eight to six, a team that works Sunday through Wednesday from 11 to nine, a second team that works Wednesday to Saturday from 11 to nine. And then we have two, one team that works Sunday through Wednesday, 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM and another team that works Wednesday to Saturday, 10:00, 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. So you could see that there is some overlap and that overlap is based on volume of calls, based on history and where the staffing needs are. When we don't have a mobile crisis team available, we try to pull from other resources in our crisis center if we have staff available to take that call and that's been effective. We do have two dedicated vehicles for that, those teams that we receive through some grant funding. So the difference between that and ICT one through five, again, mobile crisis response available countywide, ICT one through five, Wichita vicinity. This is ICT one is one team. It's a three-person team made up of a paramedic, a law enforcement officer and clinician. It runs Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then two through five are four teams. They have two individuals on those teams. It's a clinician, a master's degree clinician and an integrated care specialist. And we have one team that works Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, one that works Saturday, Wednesday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, one that works Monday through Thursday from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM and another team works Wednesday through Saturday, 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. So this one is limited to 8:00 AM to 2:00, I mean, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And that was based on WPD's data review and areas of need. So we have three dedicated vehicles that were part and funded through our contract with Wichita for that particular service. So I pulled together our mobile crisis response. I do want to say when our staff are not on a mobile response call, they are doing work within the facility. So it's not like there's downtime for these teams. They're screening and working with people in any capacity that might be needed through the crisis center. So you could see in 2023, we had 832 requests for mobile crisis response. And if you look at our average response time at that point, this is 2023, not that long ago, our response time was 140.8 minutes. Not where we wanted to be because we wanted to be under an hour. So as our staffing improved, we've gotten down to 2024 32-minute average, which we think is a wonderful response time. That barely gives our time a chance to review a clinical record. Um, that barely gives our time a chance to review a clinical record before hitting the street and, and trying to intervene. But you could see our numbers have progressed as we've grown these teams. 2020, we had 323 requests, 2021, 534, and in 2022, 539. So the fact that we went to 832 last year shows that with enhanced staffing, um, we could do a lot more and we want to continue to do that. So just to give you a sense of where we're at, um, you could see on this particular screen, um, the number that were completed by month. You know, when you think about, I'll do that on the next page. So you could see that about half of the individuals or less are known to com care. We have had to hospitalized individuals. Again, these are often intense calls when we get them on the, the crisis line. Um, we have made some referrals to law enforcement. But you could see that our average treat and place time is pretty darn good, um, particularly, um, the last two months where it was 80% and 85%. So just an example of what a mobile crisis response call, again, these are the ones that are coming direct to com care, not going through nine one one. Um, a patient calls with suicidal intent, we meet her at her home. Um, we create a safety plan with her and reconnect her to services and with a med appointment at crisis on the same day. And then we contacted siblings so that somebody could stay with her as she navigated that crisis, um, and stabilized a bit in the community. So this can be somebody calling on behalf of themselves, or it could be somebody calling on behalf of a stranger or a loved one. These, um, most of these do not require a law enforcement partnership, although we do from time to time, um, particularly when a weapon is involved or potentially involved. We screen that before we go out and, um, we may call for, um, support and backup. So that's mobile crisis response. It was very hard to try to figure out how to put a table together that would show, um, all six months of 2020. Oh, this is 2020, May 2024. Sorry, I have a typo. Um, this year to show the number for ICT two through five on one slide. So I decided to just pick a month. And you could see that between ICT one through five, we had 372 responses.
Joan, did you say that's just May of 24?
Twenty four.
372 responses in May of 24?
Twenty four for ICT one through five. So you think about that, 372 plus the 75 on our mobile crisis response team. That's 450 crisis response calls in a month that we're doing. That's pretty impressive when you think about, um, where we were several years ago. Um, these are people that are being treated in their community rather than having to come into the mental health center to be seen. Pretty proud of that. So we continue to meet our goal, um, of treating in place greater than 50%. In May, it was 61%, um, 372 requests were made. You know, we don't always get out there and somebody's there, you know, so we may scour a neighborhood trying to find the person, um, they described, um, but, um, the good news is our treat and place numbers are really good. So these calls are just slightly different. Again, they're initiated by nine one one or law enforcement. So for example, this one, I, and, and you know, these are just generic. Um, these are real, but they're generic types of calls that we may get to differentiate the different levels of response. Spouse calls nine one one because husband reports intent to die by police with a plan, physically destroying things in the home. Spouse left the home with the dog out of fear for safety. Met law enforcement at QuickTrip to provide collateral information. The law enforcement officers call ICT. We make contact with the identified patient and we negotiate safe transport to the hospital. Sounds really simple on paper. These complex cases could take hours because we're often reaching out to other family members or, um, other service providers that may be seeing these individuals. We're trying to find anything that helps us connect with that individual because the highest risk individuals who feel disconnected from anybody. So we're trying to find a way, um, to pass through that moment of crisis to the point where they can engage again, um, and, and try to have a safe, um, um, return to their baseline. Okay. So then we have the embedded, um, um, again, this is a collaboration with nine one one. Um, I know Alora's team and my team really excited about the potential of this. Um, really need to figure out how do we, um, maximize these resources so that, um, the numbers of referrals to these, um, integrated care specialist, um, increases. But our hours, uh, these are two, we have two of them right now. These were based on call volume and the highest prevalence of what was documented as a mental health call. Monday through Friday, 12 P M to eight P M. And then Sunday through Thursday, 12:30 P M to eight thirty P M. Um, I hope to tell some really, um, exciting, um, stories about that work, um, in the future. So, you know, the reality is, is we have success with these programs every single day. Um, we have dedicated leadership. We have dedicated employees who, who do this life-saving work and it truly is life-saving. We have had a strategic and incremental implementation of different mobile crisis response options. Uh, many lives have changed for the better and the reality is we've saved lives. We have shown up at doors as somebody was ready to pull a trigger or they had the noose hung in their home and were ready to act on that impulse. The fact that we were able to help them navigate through that crisis is really exciting. You know, one life saved is one life saved. It's really important. Uh, we are on the front line with our public safety partners and there is tremendous community support and demand for the services. So I can't do successes without talking about challenges. You know, staffing has been a challenge, not, uh, not again, for lack of people who want to do this life-saving work once they're in the roles, but it is hard to find people that want to work overnight, um, shifts. Um, you know, there's a limited pool of qualified clinicians. Um, it is hard and exhausting work. Um, it's unpredictable work. You don't know what you're going into any more than our law enforcement partners or our EMS partners or our fire partners. Um, and safety is always an issue. It's, uh, paramount to us and it's paramount for us to have those conversations on a routine basis. And you know, we're starting to look at wearable safety devices for our folks out in the field. Because, you know, we just have a more volatile community and we have all these substances out on the street. It's making people very impulsive and agitated and, um, sometimes talking through something with somebody doesn't work for somebody who's who got some organic symptoms or currently high on a substance that we don't know about. What has made a difference? I will tell you, the salary increases in 2022 was instrumental in helping us build our, um, overall workforce, but particularly in our crisis program. Um, our grow, our own is showing tremendous potential. And one of the really key drivers of recruitment for us on our mobile crisis teams is every year we get eight to 10, um, the master's degree students who intern with us and they get to shadow and do some of the work at crisis. So by the time they graduate and get their credentialing, um, and are eligible for us to hire, they've had exposure to what it's like to do mobile crisis services and they're interested in it. So that has been our greatest recruitment team. So in the last few weeks, we have gone from three to six of our eight positions filled because it's the end of the academic year and folks that have been with us are moving into those roles. Um, I think it's important for us to continue to look at how do we, uh, assure that these teams are available to the community at time of need. Um, I would like us to explore the option of paid internships. Um, this is becoming the standard. And, uh, we want the best candidates, um, not just any candidate that wants to come and do a practicum with us. So we'd like that little competition back to get the best so that we grow the best. Uh, we really need to look at what our options are for weekend incentives, um, and these overnight shifts. It's really hard. Uh, people don't want to give up family time or have disrupted sleep cycles to do this after our work and, um, I would, um, like to have more conversation about potentially piloting something to see what the impact is. And then our staff come out of their graduate degree programs with significant debt. So we need to continue to push for loan repayment options, um, with our legislative public platform and, and other avenues where we might have the potential for, uh, for increasing the um, opportunity for people to want to work in public services. You know, it's, our work is different than those that go into private practice. But we're working with the most vulnerable and those with the greatest needs. So we need the greatest workforce we could possibly get. So what's on the horizon? So, um, some of you have seen, um, through Naco, I think Commissioner Dennis was the last one that sent me a document related to the fact that there is a legislative push, um, to get, um, geolocation services available for nine eight eight, um, so that, um, whoever calls from our area gets through to the local crisis hotline versus just being based on area code. We don't know the timeline of that. There's been a legislative push at the federal level. We do anticipate that this will increase nine eight eight calls, um, because we think there will be a significant marketing approach when this actually happens. I will say Kansas was ahead of the curve. We, um, um, have part, you know, partnerships with K Dads and have nine eight eight coordinating councils and implementation teams. So Kansas is in a uniquely positive spot when it comes to nine eight eight response versus many states that were not prepared for the launch. So the goal is to have an 85% or higher answer rate to nine eight eight one calls. And Kansas is doing that and com care is doing its part. Um, and then I mentioned just a bit earlier, text and chat. Um, we're moving toward that. We're going to be adding four positions to take those chat um, and text calls. Um, I hope to have that contract coming to you soon. One of the things that's really important is to get a leap on getting these positions hired um, versus, um, delaying that because we want to spend down our darned dollars when we get them. So with that, I am open to questions.
Well, Joan, thank you. Very good presentation, good update, timely update. Sure, we have a few questions. Mr. Dennis.
Thanks. Thanks, Joan. I appreciate it. Uh, you had a slide on response times. Is that calculated from the time that they're, uh, notified of, uh, the dispatch until they arrive there? Or does it also include the time that they're with the patient?
It's the time from call to the time we get there.
Okay. Do you have any data on the time with patient to, how long to with that individual?
I'm sure we do. I didn't pull that for this presentation, but, um, I, I'll, I'll double check for you.
Okay. Well, I just don't know how long it takes once you arrive.
Takes, takes a bit.
It's going to vary depending on the severity.
Yeah. I don't think we get out of them in less than an hour and a half, two hours. Once you're in, you're in that.
And I, I saw that you had a number of, uh, vehicles that are provided by the county. Is anyone taking a private vehicle at this time on dispatches?
It's possible that they are. They actually are funded through the city and through the, um, the state, um, through grants. Um, uh, it's possible that it may, um, result in somebody choosing to use their own vehicle, but we have vehicles and then we have a couple of vans as well at crisis that staff can use.
Okay. Well, I, I really don't like using private.
Yeah, I don't either.
I, I think it sets us up for a liability that, uh, we don't want. Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions? Mr.?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Chairman. Um, a couple of questions. Back to the, um, ICT one through five. Can you please explain again, uh, the, uh, I don't know what slide this is. It's one of the hours of operations slide. Well, I'm kind of confused on this one. So ICT one through five, those are two-person teams.
Yes.
They're in county vehicles and they're.
They are. Yes.
They're paid for by, this is a com care. These are, yeah. So the two staffs are in the vehicle is a. Explain, please explain to me again. Who's in the vehicle again?
So, um, these are city-funded positions and vehicles and these, these are two-man teams. One is a master degree clinician and one is a bachelor degree integrated care specialist.
And so these are county employees?
Yes, they are.
And they're, it's a county vehicle?
They are now. Yes.
Okay. And the city's paying for everything?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'd like to see some numbers on all that, but, and then on the, the, uh, the three-person team, that is still ICT one, that's still including L E O, uh, a paramedic and a.
Yes. And then they responded to the highest level calls.
We only have one of those.
Only one of those.
We're still splitting the cost with Wichita on that one?
Yes.
I haven't seen in, in a while. Excuse me. I'm sorry about that. Sorry.
You get your.
I need a coffee again, but I haven't seen lately a map of showing the, uh, the place where these calls. Again, I'm not asking for specific addresses. I'm just asking generally geographically. How many of these, what percentage of these calls are Wichita versus other places outside of Wichita?
Well, all of ICT one through five is Wichita only. I, our mobile crisis response will return, will respond to outside the Wichita area. So.
We have some data showing how many calls are outside of Wichita.
Oh, I'm sure we could pull that as.
I'd really like to see that. That'd be great to, to know that. Okay. So all, all of ICT one through five is, is only Wichita. Okay. Looking at this, uh, this slide right here, just trying to understand it. Um, it says eight teams, two-person teams. Is that 16 people?
Yes.
Okay. Then you say two Sunday. I look, it says 24/7 staffing. Yes, permits.
So we have two teams that run the same shift. Yep.
Okay. And then, uh, notice also, on Wednesday, it looks like all four teams are going something, doing something on Wednesday.
Yeah, there is, there is overlap. Yes.
All four teams are basically busy eight A M to six P M on, on Wednesday.
Those were identified as high, high need times. Yes.
Okay. So there's four teams out there doing something on Wednesdays.
Yes.
And then likewise, the overlap on the, on the other side, are, are these, or is everything on this slide referring to ICT one through five? Is our, our ICT one, do they have different hour, where are they on this list or are they different hours entirely?
No, they're, they're included, um, in the, you'll see ICT one is the first team on the second column. They work Monday through Thursday, eight A M to six P M. And then ICT two through five.
Joan, Joan, while we're on this slide, can you go back to slide six real quick just to do a comparative between slide six and this one?
I wish, I can't see the numbers. Where am I going?
I'm where?
This one. Okay. So the, uh, the total full times, that's, this is not inclusive of ICT one through six. This is just your integrated response team. There's more staffing being thrown at this than just these 16. Is that true? Or are these added together?
Let me pull so I can make sure I answer you absolutely correctly. So you'll see that down below we have the integrated care, the embedded I C S. Yeah, this is the last three down at the bottom. The integrated care team, we have four of our five teams filled. And then our mobile crisis response team, these are just teams. The ones at the bottom are just teams.
I'd add all these columns up and that gives me the total amount of manpower we are throwing at mobile crisis.
I would have to give you the numbers on the bottom piece. So I have the numbers in the top, but down below I reference teams. So I can get you those numbers. It's significant.
Yeah. Uh, that's what I'm trying to, the world is changing in front of our eyes.
Yes. So the top part is, so the top is just the, um, the effort to support nine eight eight and the crisis hotline and the bottom is the team numbers. Um, but staffing numbers are not on the bottom. I can get that to you. So so far, a heat map?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to see some, some, some details on funding. I'd like to see what Wichita is putting out total for the different, I, for ICT one versus ICT two through five.
Yeah.
As well as the county.
I know.
What are, what are respective costs? And then I'd like to see, just to, I understand ICT one includes a Wichita PD officer. Is that correct?
Yeah. So I could tell you, um, ICT one is supported at 110,000 by the city. ICT through, two through five is supported up to 843.5. Um, it just depends on what we invoice based on our staffing pattern. And then some of our mobile crisis response is funded through K Dads. I should say, our ICT one clinician is funded by the county. That is one of our general fund positions.
And there was the other question I have, I'd like to see the breakdown of where the, what was the revenue coming from for the various parts of this entire funding picture. So
Yeah.
You know, Wichita is talking about a $55 million shortfall. So I'm just wondering, on their side, how much of this is property tax versus grant funds and that type of thing? I don't know. I've never, I don't have any data on their side.
I have no clue either on that. I do know that they really value these partnerships and have even talked about expansion.
I, I will get qualitative data or quantitative data. Let me, I'll have a budget analyst work this up. This is
That'd be great.
It's sort of budget season. This is kind of important information so we can Yeah, and I will just, Rusty, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in ICT one, that is a general fund, city police officer. All of the integrated, the response teams, they went and got a grant. And I think 100% of those employees are grant-funded. There is no county or city general funding going to that. To answer your question, I think the city's GF funding into this arena is relatively small compared to what we're doing. Again, just a couple of other observations. So since they do respond outside of Wichita, and again, I know the, the Kahoots model, wherever that was in
Oregon.
Oregon, I think they had two-person teams. I think the LEOs they used were on-call. Sounds like they're doing on-call LEOs in Wichita for ICT two through five. I'm just wondering, in ICT one, does it make sense for to do an on-call LEO on that team, other words, have a two-person team on ICT one, use officers as needed on, if you perceive there's a situation where you need an officer, why not call them in on ICT one when you need them? And then, and also, like you say, you know, in your city outside of Wichita or the county, you would call in the respective
We'd, we'd call them in. Yeah, I think, you know, I think, I think we just have to decide, you know, what this highest level need calls that, I mean, ICT one will pick up some pretty intense calls off of the dispatch.
Can I ask a question on that one? The determining the individual making the factor between ICT one versus two, three, four, or five is a 911 dispatcher?
So ICT one monitors
Yeah, radio traffic.
The police and EMS channels, they're monitoring 911 traffic throughout their shift. And they will self-respond, or they can be requested by law enforcement, fire, or EMS.
And I think that's the value is, you know, they're, they're being proactive in responding to the mental health calls wait, versus waiting for a 911 dispatch of the team.
Rusty, did I misspeak on, on the city side of this?
We need to clarify. It's my understanding that ICT two through five, we, we need to clarify. It's my understanding that ICT two through five, the funding for the current year was city GF.
That's what I thought, too.
And they're providing enough money to pay for the comcare personnel and for the vehicles. ICT one, they're paying for the police officer, which is probably the 110,000. But then Chief Snow is providing the city vehicle, city maintenance, all of that. We're providing a paramedic and a clinician.
No, it's two through five that are, that are, I think we have questions on, on whether that's tax-funded or whether that is ARPA.
I'm pretty sure that that was tax-funded, but we need to verify.
Yep.
Just to make sure.
We'll do, we'll do a follow-up on this.
Yeah.
Okay, so I get back out of that one. So right now I'm up to just a heat map. I'm just making sure I know what my follow-up is.
Your, your, your follow-up is a heat map for Commissioner Houle to determine where these calls are landing.
For mobile crisis, yeah.
Originally ICT one was responsive outside of Wichita, but it was rare that they would be called. I know they've been to Derby, they've been to a couple other communities, but it's rare that they're being called because the response time is greater into those outer communities. And, and the incident of that kind of crisis is generally smaller, but I think
I agree.
You know, Joan's crew, in-house, they can respond within an hour. They're probably going outside the city more often than ICT one during their, their shift.
When, when, when did ICT two through five start?
It started in
Zoom app?
It's on here, on my little timeline.
Twenty-three?
2023. So it, we started hiring in 2023, and we started data collecting in February of this year. So we were building up.
Yeah, I just was wondering why the response time in 23, the average for the whole year was 140 minutes. And then in January, it dropped way down.
It was staffing-related.
It's like flipping a switch. It's like night and day.
Yeah, we get those, we get those additional teams.
Okay, all right. Couple of other quick questions here. A while back, I think I talked about, you know, again, I think it's, it's totally fine using the model we have that works. It sounds like works great for central accounting in Wichita. I'm just wondering if there's been any thought to use in any type of on-call service for third-party providers outside in the community that we would call for these types of things. They'd be on-call, and they would be able to respond to these calls. So in other words, one of my questions is, you know, when, when ICT one goes to, goes to work, they, and they start their shift. In previous PowerPoint slides, we saw some earlier presentations talking about they spend a little bit of time doing training or, you know, getting ready for their shift type of thing. I think it's 10-hour shift. So they have four 10-hour shifts, and so they spend a couple, you know, a little bit of time, maybe an hour or so, whatever, the beginning of their, getting, getting ready to go out. And then they, then they listen, they wait, and it may take some time for that initial call that's going to activate them to go out. It'd be nice to see some data to say, how much time are they spending actually on the streets dealing with calls versus waiting for that call to come in? What's the ratio of timeout to delivering services versus waiting for that call to come in?
Yeah, some of that might be a little hard to quantify because if they're not responding to a call, they may be doing follow-up with somebody they saw the day before or a few days before. But I'll see if we could pull anything. I'm not sure that I could do that as easily as some other data elements.
Has there been any thought to using community providers for providing some of these services on an on-call basis?
I quite honestly think that would be a disaster. This is really difficult work, having our electronic health record, having our partnerships with the hospital and the law enforcement that have taken years to build and nurture. I think it could reduce the quality of the service that we're doing.
Okay, my final question. I have a couple of related questions, but they're all together. On the slide that's blue, this is level of effort. I'm just trying to understand your numbers here. So you have 372 requests in May of '24, if I understand that correctly. Then down below in the, in the notes, it says that they actually responded to 272 of those 372 requests. So why, why are there more requests than there are responses?
Because we might get out on the scene and nobody's there. It could be that the request was called off before we got there. It could be a variety of different reasons. It could be that there wasn't a unit available because they were on another call. It could be a holiday and we didn't have a unit on duty. So there's a variety of different reasons why we couldn't necessarily respond to all of those. Many of them are abandoned because we can't find somebody.
So out of 372, they responded to 272, which is about 73%. Then of those, they engaged 195, which is 52% of those folks. Of those, they treated in place 61%, which is 119. At least 76 that were not treated in place out of the 119. Is there a breakdown as to actually what happened to those 76?
Yeah, they could have wound up in the hospital. They could have been taken to jail. Yeah, those are the primary reasons we handed them off to another entity.
I just would like to see that data if it's available. Thank you. Thanks, Chairman.
Okay, a few questions and we'll let you off the hook. I, I am pretty alarmed at the number of calls that are taking place. I, I guess the trajectory has soared over the last few years, it feels like, yeah. And then I anticipate that this is going to continue to, to increase. So I have some questions on, I, I'd love to see the data that Commissioner Houle is referencing in regards to ICT one versus two, three, four, and five, and the cost effectiveness of the model. There was one point, to be transparent, I wondered if we even needed ICT one at all? If we could just do the co-responder model outside of having a law enforcement officer? But based on what we just learned about the type of call that ICT one is going on, and then looking at the data of 372 total calls in just May, 70 were for the ICT one unit. You anticipate we're going to need another type of ICT one unit with a law enforcement officer? So we have two of those?
Yeah, I don't know. You know, I think these teams are getting really good at self-identifying which team responds. I mean, Rusty, you might have a different perspective, but with one team self-identifying, they kind of gravitate toward a certain type of call versus the other teams. I don't know that we need another team, but it sure is nice to have that resource. I mean, these are, this team is often the one on site where you have a potential hostage situation. They're trying to negotiate somebody out of a home that's barricaded themselves there because of psychiatric crisis. You know, Rusty knows this as well as I do. Collectively, that team needs to decide, do they disengage from the scene in order to relieve the pressure valve and not have an intervention with that individual or not? I don't know. It would take a lot to grow another team. These take time to organically form. This team had the luxury of being the first, and so there was a passion element to those that are on that team. That would be hard to find in a second team.
I'll tell you, Chairman, I, I think we need to watch this very carefully. WPD, Wichita, very aware of mental health in the community. And if you look at what's changed in the last 30 or 40 years, when police made calls, it was just crime or no crime. Now they are factoring in, they're getting intelligent on what's mental health versus just true manifestation of crime. I think we have to watch this very carefully. It's, it's evolving. As we speak, there's so much more self-awareness in the community. There's so much more self-social acceptance in the community now on how to deal with this. That's what, that's the dynamic that's changing. And then technology, texting, and how use of phones and how we communicate, all this landscape is changing very rapidly. That's why I wanted to, nothing else today, just to show how much resource we are shifting toward mobile response versus come to us and we'll serve you. That we are taking it out to them now. Cops will, will treat this almost like a SWAT or bomb call. They get there, there's a specialty group needed, and we will then send for response. And a 30-minute response is outstanding
Yeah.
to, to get that kind of technical help to these officers so that they can move on and do whatever else they have to do. We'll have to watch this on your ICT one, more or less, we have to watch, see what happens.
Well, I had two observations. When I talk to police officer friends, they say that, that are on the beat, that they say the bulk of their calls they're handling now are mental health calls. I mean, this is the bulk of what they're going to, is, is a significant number of mental health calls where there's a mental health element happening. And the second thing was, is when we start, you haven't even launched the text, the chat text features yet. It's a pending contract. The inputs coming into the system are going to increase. They're going to compound.
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm just trying to, I'm wondering how we
Well, and I think, you know, one of the things I didn't have on the horizon, but one of the things that's working really well in Oklahoma is all of their law enforcement officers have iPads so they can remote in for a telehealth visit with our crisis teams. We're not doing that. Now, we do have law enforcement officers that will call the crisis line while they're out in the field and get guidance and even put the person on the phone to help resolve that crisis when we're not there in person. But I think, you know, when you think of technology, there's, there's additional opportunity there that in Kansas, we haven't yet tapped.
Okay, last question on 988. Would we move to the new crisis center? Will 988 move with?
Absolutely, it'll grow.
Okay, so my, my question is, and this is just a question, if it's been under consideration, as we're talking about the 911 embedded dispatchers, 988, the volume for each, has there ever been a thought? And I'd be curious who funds what, if it's 911 department funding or Comcare funding for those embedded in 911? But has there been a thought about trying to collaborate those two, the 988 folks and 911 embedded? Maybe try to collaborate both of those uses into one setting? Has that ever been a discussion to?
It, it hasn't, not, not fully embedded. I think the benefit of having your 988 staff available on site is they can go grab a queue or jabber a queue and get them involved or have the support to debrief in different ways. That doesn't mean it's not a potential opportunity. I'm sure it's done in other communities. I haven't, I haven't heard of it, but
There might be a model, but I want to hear that we're trying to find ways to keep the, I mean, I've been over at 911 and saw those two individuals. And we're trying to find a way to keep them busy, but yet 988 is, and that team is growing. I just thought maybe, I was curious if there was ever discussion.
Yeah.
It's currently a two-funnel system right now, right? You have 988, and it all funnels to the same place to get help out to the people that need it. I think the question is, can you take the two-funnel system and make it into one-funnel system?
I, I didn't know if there was ever discussion for that.
Yeah, I don't know. We haven't talked about that, and they don't, they don't funnel into the same system because they're separate lines, but
Right, two different distinct
Yeah, yeah.
But same, same, yeah, same
Same end is getting a response to the patient, yep.
Okay. Well, Joan, I'll tell you, it's been incredibly helpful. The last question I have is, I work with a group called Pedemos, who's public health, but they, they're very sincere about their efforts in mental and behavioral health and those that are Spanish-speaking. And seems to be a problem of having bilingual clinicians in this space. Is that a continual problem, or we simply do not have enough with a growing population in our community of those that are, that are Spanish-speaking?
Yeah, it's really hard to recruit minority specialists. I mean, quite frankly, they're, they can make a heck of a lot more doing private practice because they are distinct and unique, and people like to be served by people that look like them. We are increasing our efforts for diversification. We've got more Spanish-speaking staff than we've ever had. So we're trying to consider adding those as our integrated care specialists if we can't get them as clinicians.
Great point. Well, thank you, Joan. Any other questions? This has been really helpful.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, that's it. See you tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM.